Okay, it's 6:30, so let's open the Tuesday, December 13th, 22 planning board, planning board meeting. And our first agenda item is our minutes from November 22nd.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is gonna be a fast meeting. No discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next item is continued hearing on site plan review for a two lot common driveway.
Is time sensitive? It's continued towards time certain. It's not that time dependent for 6:45.
Yeah, okay.
So if there's other visits you'd like to take outside that such as the subdivisions, the active subdivision administration or upcoming hearings or...
Well, let's skip down to item four then, Bryce Lemon Estates, which I don't believe we have any reports on Bryce Lemon.
That's correct.
Uh, so item five, Britton Estates subdivision administration.
Yes, there was one in the package.
Something, something in there. Not much, let's put it that way.
No, a lot was the road, the pavement, pavement tests. The update on the cul-de-sacs, crossing around.
This is for Britton Estates.
Yeah, you had it down for number four, it's number five.
Yeah, which, you know, I, I don't see any particular problems other than he's just, a lot of things he's just restating from previous things. The, one comment that I would make is I think it is virtually now impossible that he is going to have that clear for this winter. So Bear Hill 2 is still on hold, houses up there. As far as I can see, anyway.
And our building inspector knows that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
All right.
That is, I just wanna get this.
There was nothing on Bear Hill 2?
Out of here before I get mixed up. Uh, next is number six, Bear Hill 2 subdivision administration. Again, I don't believe we have anything on that.
Nothing on that either.
Upcoming site hearings and site visits. I don't know, any comment you wanna make on that?
So you'll see that there's items on the agenda which are upcoming items. These are scheduled for the 10th of January. The reason why we have these on the agenda is to let the board know that there's some upcoming hearings before the board and see if the board would like to conduct a site visit or discuss it. And if so, set maybe some tentative dates. And then we were drafting agenda for your site visit if the board decides to have a site visit on these. So the first one is 219 to 230, 223 Pummagus at Road. This is a petition which I'm showing up here on the site plan that we've received from the applicant. This is for a two lot common driveway site plan. In addition, there'll be an A and R that'll be taken on the same night for the board's consideration. So right now, this interior lot line does not exist. Those two interior lot lines do not exist. That shows the intent for the A and R. And then you'll see that there's a driveway that goes to a main house, which is in, which is in the middle here. And next to that is what's being called a barn, which I believe is actually dwelling. So the common driveway would serve those two lots. And that's it in a nutshell.
We're about to...
And the temporary, it says 20 foot, oh, right away, I think.
That's really, that's been, that's, I believe that's supposed to be abandoned from here.
Okay.
It's not, it's not really relevant to this. It's just, what's really before the board is the access.
No, no, I just, because of the dotted line, we'll make it, make it disappear.
What did you say about that building? I didn't quite...
Up on the left hand, it's a barn.
A barn, okay.
Which will probably be made into a house or something like that.
It's my understanding that's currently a dwelling. But the board can get into those particulars later, I think would be appropriate.
Yeah, no, I was just curious.
Where that Christmas tree fire was way back when.
Oliver.
Yeah.
Oliver.
Oliver's.
Was it Ruth Oliver, Ruth? I'm trying to remember, he was on Concom for a while, the husband.
Because I, I know there is what looks like a garage and it does have like an apartment or something above. My niece, I think, rented it for a little while.
So it is across from Glenn Coppola's place, more or less.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So is there any interest in the board having a site visit collectively? Or would you just like to do your own individual site visits?
I don't know, I, I don't see a...
I don't see a need.
I don't see a real need for a site, site walk on that.
I may just buzz up there, turn around and buzz out.
Again, it's one of these things, you know, if anybody really wants to, you know, fine.
Yep.
But I don't think we need anything formal where we have the applicant out there and all that kinda stuff either.
All right, great, would you want me to roll onto the next one?
Yep.
So the next one is 52 Paddock Road. This is a special permit for accessory dwelling unit. It looks like we're having a little bit of success with this, with the concept of accessory dwelling unit special permits. This will be the third one. This is currently, as we understand it, a dwelling unit is currently in here. The applicant is just looking to bring it into code compliance. I believe the apartment is on the, if you're looking at the picture here, on the left side of that dwelling, of that structure.
Well, there again, compliance would really be on the building inspector's part on something like this.
Well, there's two, two compliances, one for under zoning, which is not currently.
Yeah.
The other one on the building. So this will bring it into zoning compliance.
Yeah, but, how could we find it not in compliance?
Well, it's not, it's a non-compliant accessory dwelling unit right now.
Yeah.
The applicant is looking to have it sanctioned.
Yeah.
That's what this process does allow. It has a provision to have people come in, you know, after the fact. And I believe what they're actually doing here is they're wanting to make a permanent party wall between the two units for the first time. So they're actually, are doing something substantial.
Yeah.
So...
I just, you know, it's, it's gotta be on a legal lot.
Yeah. Something, all that stuff is gonna be...
Yeah, but that's not our business.
That's right.
So...
Right, that's correct. So the board will be looking at the number of bedrooms, the overall area of the apartment with relationship to the rest of the structure.
Correct.
Whether there's sufficient parking, those are the narrow zoning questions.
Yeah, okay. Do we have any drawn plans or anything?
Yes, we do. Just for the purposes of trying to be efficient here, we just gave you the basic overview. We do have the packets, which we'll be getting out in time for the meeting. Yes, there's a drawing, it's done to scale. It's done by hand, scale and dimension. So the board will probably wanna grant a waiver or consider granting a waiver for that plan requirement. But it does show the number of rooms, overall square footage.
Okay. Again, I don't see any reason for a site visit on that one.
No.
And then the last one, if you want me to move on, is for 175 Berry Paxton Road. As the board recalls, this was involved, the zoning change, recent zoning change for a lot of auto sales in the VC zone. This property is in the VC zone. And the applicant is looking to use a portion of the property, especially that portion to the left, which is more open, for used, for a vehicle, used car sale lot, auto repair. So it's not the entire lot, it's just a fragment of the lot.
That one, I think I'd be interested in going to see.
Because of the ancient road?
Well, more than anything, just to get an idea of the scale.
Oh, okay.
You know, of...
Been there.
How, how big it's gonna be, how much area it's actually gonna take out.
Then that being said, do you have any suggested, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And then, then that being said, do you have any suggested dates? Yes, we can put it as tentative at this point?
I'd put it as tentative, just, we can't do it during a meeting. We have no daylight for the foreseeable future. So...
So that's what, what I'm asking you, is the board would like to set us on a couple Saturdays or a particular date? Keeping in mind that this will be scheduled for the 10th of January.
I don't know, I, I almost think that I'd rather have a site walk after we start the public hearing.
That's your, the board's call?
Well, that way we, we will have reviewed all of the information.
You'd have a better idea of what, exactly what he's proposing.
Right.
That's a, that's a good call, I like that.
So a site visit for after the hearing, okay.
Yeah. Okay, we still got four minutes to go here. Okay.
Give the Smithsonian one real quick, it'll be up to 6:45.
Yeah, Smithsonian is being set up, or I don't know if it is completely set up.
It'll be set up in time for the 18th of December. This is an event, so this is, this is a big deal.
Uh, I took a, I took a peek this afternoon there, and yeah, it's, it's filling up that whole room.
This is an important, an important traveling exhibition.
Yeah.
We celebrate towns of this type with a, with a strong rural background. This is really a big deal. So we have the flyer up there, this has some of the details. This runs from the 18th of December to the 28th of January, 2023. It's in the library downstairs, as you mentioned. It's free, open to the public. As part of this, so it's an ex, it's an exhibition which focuses on the town's rural history. This is in association with the Smithsonian Institution with major, major contribution and a heavy lift up by the 300th Committee, which outreach with the CMR PC when this opportunity became available last year. And the 300th Committee did a lot of excellent work to coordinate this and to have the meeting with work, also working with the library as well. Great kudos to Carrie and her staff.
Is that you as a kid driving that wagon?
And what you see down here, there are a series of events that are part of this. So from the 28th until the 22nd, there are several events focusing on different aspects.
You say this is on the town webpage?
Yes, it is, it's on the homepage. You go to the town's main homepage, this is the first item.
One of the things I didn't realize for a long, long time is that they very commonly use oxen, not horses.
That's right.
And actually down in the lower part of my property, there's my spring, I found a half an oxen's shoe.
Exactly, and that's how you tell a lot of oxen, oh, because of the hoof.
They have a split.
Split hoof, so, yep. I have a lot of pictures for kind of a lot of the Smith family down below myself, my house and down back.
I have a picture when they were dragging out the, the mass for the king's ships. And that there's 22 teams of oxen on my cart.
Yep.
Interesting.
And the wheels were bigger than a grown man's head.
No, I wouldn't doubt that.
No.
Yeah, that looks...
I'm gonna have to make, make time for coming up to see this stuff.
Well, we're gonna be here for what, 10, full 10 days over a week.
And we're only one of six communities, I believe, that has this.
Oh, yeah, interesting. Okay, I'd say we're at 6:45. So let's go back to item two, site plan review for a two lot common driveway. I guess the, the main sticking point from the last time was we did not have the, for lack of a better word, homeowner's agreement, although, I forget. But the real term would be something like this.
I think that's what it is, homeowner's agreement for the two lot common driveway.
Yeah. Which, just in the, in the interest of transparency, Cleese sent this thing out, I took a look at it, and it was missing two critical aspects. Namely, the indemnity, the release of the town, that the town is not responsible or da, 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 and so forth. So I gave him, I gave him a call, and apparently he put a whip to George and...
Looked a bit of fly on the wall then.
Yeah, I know, and about a half hour later, he sent me the revised vision, which contains the correct language.
All right. I have a question, I'd like to bring it up now. I would like to call DCR. The fellow that was down and did the, you know, check on the watershed and all that over here. I want a letter from him.
Saying?
That everything is clear. Because when I take it to the city of Worcester, I just wanna make sure I have that letter.
So you're gonna go to DCR?
Yeah.
Okay.
Been having some talks with him.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, about watershed, drinking water, some maze. And this thing here goes directly into Pine Hill Reservoir.
Oh, really?
Yes. That's why I wanna talk to him and have a letter.
Okay, uh, well, do we have any other discussion regarding the two lot common driveway?
No, and it's not where the flags are and it's gonna be, or the, it's flagged, but not where the opening is.
Right.
Correct, okay.
Any comment from the public? Do we have any public out there?
No comment.
No comments, okay. I guess I'll, I'll assess a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I would ring it to grant site plan approval.
What does that, dick song?
Well, it has a...
Doesn't really have anything to do with that.
No, because I believe Concom's already gone through this thing and they're all set with it. But the letter is more for my education and his education.
Okay, that's good.
I make a motion that the public hearing on Main Street, Zero Main Street, common driveway, I'm losing the word, common driveway.
Give site, give site plan approval to it.
So plan approval for the common driveway on, at Zero Main Street.
Second.
And I have a second. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, well, let, let's go back to Hilltop. Basically, we, we did get a reply from New England Environmental Design. It did go to Quinn, but it was only, I don't know, a day, two days ago, something like that. So they have had, not had time to reply to, like, I'm assuming there are changes in the plans as well?
Yes, revised plans that were submitted.
Yeah.
And where it indicates that the plan has been changed, those items are shown on the plan as they change.
So since we do not have a report from Quinn, I would say that we do not do any further discussion and continue the hearing too.
The 10th of January, 2023, at 6:45 PM?
Do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion that we continue the hearing for the Hilltop Estates until on...
January 10th, 2023.
January 10th, 2022.
23?
23, sorry.
And?
And we might as well add a final extension, extension here, just to have it from 5/1/2023 to June 1st, 2023.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
For discussion only. I am all, I'm all done with this.
You're all done with this?
Yes. Either he fans another way in, or that's it for me. Because I, I'm tired, I, you know, all of a sudden, I went through this thing, eliminated detention ponds, you know, and he's trying to correct water going over Brittono and different things back and forth. Well, I, I feel that if he's directing the water off that normally seeps into the ground and now it's being discharged someplace else, I, I feel, you know, too many things are not... And this, my opinion is not appropriate, so...
Yeah, and like I say, since I've been recusing myself, I can't really comment.
Yeah, it's just that, I think that, I personally feel that that road is...
Well, on January whatever.
Yep, 10th.
10th.
I will bring it up again and...
And I'll be out of the room?
You'll be out of the room.
Oh, we do.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Sorry, George.
The problem, I just wanna know what they're finally doing. We started out with a common drive, or two common driveways, now we're up to 12 houses.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, like I say, I, I don't, I don't have a hint where it's going, to be perfectly honest with you. And like I say, I'm closer butter, so I can't really...
I'm as close as you can.
Yes, you are, you are, you are, you are.
Don't sneeze.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, George.
Okay, we have, ooh. We have two decisions to sign.
You wanna take item eight first? Would you like to take item number eight first on the revised agenda?
Okay, we can. Apparently, the select board has sent out, I don't know, invitation wish list, let me what call it, for joint meetings with the various committees around the board, and I guess they're kinda looking for some possible dates when we might be able to meet with them. This would not be an executive session meeting, it's just an open meeting with no, I don't believe, particular agenda.
No, I think it's, as far as I understand it, it's just...
Communication.
Communication, it'll lose format just to have a generalized discussion. That's as far as I understand it, yep.
So we can beat them on the head, they can beat us on the head.
Or, as I said to Tamika, for kind of a lot, I want them to jump into the bus with us and drive around town so they know what we're doing. But with other boards on, on the bus too.
And the request was for a Wednesday or Thursday in January.
Hope I'm strong?
Yes, Dave's got down here Wednesday, the 4th, the 11th, or the 25th. And Thursday's the 12th or the 19th?
I mean, if you don't need staff to be there, then that's the board's priority.
You said you were not available on most of those Wednesdays?
Yeah, you could have other boards and committees that I staff on behalf of the town, or I have other prior commitments for other volunteer work that I do.
So to me, that narrows it down to Thursdays.
And Tim did indicate Thursday was his best day.
All right. So it's two Thursday, the 12th or the 19th?
Uh, the 5th or the 26th.
Say what?
In terms of what's open, if you need staff there.
So you only wrote it down when I printed off the thing that you sent us? If you need staff to attend, I'm not available on these evenings, but if I... I'd like him, he's too busy, but what I'm afraid of is the select board is gonna try to take him away from us.
Then that would be a good reason.
For grant writing and for other things.
That would be a good reason for us to meet with them to say, ain't no way.
If anything, I want him back. I think he's, I, you're, you're stretched out now like you can't believe, but thank God. But, you know, I, I don't know, I, I just, I, I have this gnawing thing in the back of my head for kind of a lot, I, I don't know.
I don't know, I guess after Randy's proposal last night.
Yeah, I was at the meeting along with Dave that night, and I was quite pleased with how that was running, so...
You talking the Economic Development Commission? I mean, the goal there is to, this is tangential from what we're trying to hear.
I know.
What we're trying to help is the Economic Development Commission to get them up and running, to give them a base, a foundation, some suggestions on how to put together a work plan so that, you know, so that they could be successful, so that the town could be successful. So we can try to push forward the economic development agenda in town, so... We've got valuable assistance from the Regional Planning Commission, who was able to send up a staffer who has expertise in economic development. That's been, hopefully, very, very useful to, to that group. We look forward to continuing to work with them, so...
So I'm available for any of those dates that I'm, excuse me. But I've been cleared for the, the watchman device for my heart, and they only do them on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so that would be my priority.
So it sounds like Thursdays, either one?
So if there's Thursdays, then what about the 5th or the 20th? So if it's Thursdays, then what about the 5th or the 26th?
26th is out for me. It's central mass, I have two meetings that night.
Twenty-sixth?
Yeah. So at the moment, it sounds like the 5th.
Or what would be the following one after the 26th?
That's where it's February. I don't have that calendar, we're going up here.
Either that or it holds off until February, they can meet with some other department.
Sure, then, I don't have that sketched out here, if you have any.
So Thursday, we have 2/9/16/23.
2/9?
16/23, and 23 is out, the last Thursday is always central mass.
I would not be available on the 3rd Thursday.
So January 5th did not work for the board? And that's why you're going to February?
Well, we're just giving a couple of options here. It, it looks like the 5th works.
At the moment.
Yeah.
So that's-
But if for some reason, rather than they say no?
And right now, you only have four members, three, four members who-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, you have a competing meeting on the 5th.
We do?
Yes, Thursday, first and third Thursday of every month.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So that's Earthworks.
So that would take the 2nd, February 2nd, if he, then Earthworks?
Yeah.
What about the 9th of February?
The 9th would be okay then, as far as I'm concerned.
That's a Thursday, not a Wednesday.
Yeah.
It's, it's fine for me.
I don't see any conflicts there.
Unfortunately, we have two, two members missing here, so.
Well, Tim did, when he informed me he was not gonna be available tonight?
Yeah.
He was aware of this topic, and he, he indicated that his best availability is Thursday, that becomes his work schedule and all of that.
Okay.
So I think, you know, that's, on the surface seems to work.
Yeah.
Obviously, we'll go back and confirm this.
Okay.
Marilyn, does that work for you?
Thursday's would-
The 9th of February?
It should be all right.
And we, so we have four members, we most likely this is gonna work.
Yeah.
We don't know what the 5th is thinking. So I'll, I'll distribute this information tomorrow, just to-
Yeah, mm-hmm. Sounds good.
And the reason for this is because of other meetings that people have.
Yeah.
Or other, whether it's staff or the board, right, we have other-
I was gonna say, that's, yeah. Yeah, it is, or we don't want to.
Right.
Don't blame me for the- Already something from central mass just showed up.
Okay.
At the moment, February 9th is fine.
Okay, last item. Decisions, and we only have three members here, and these are both special permits.
You can sign them, I'll have to hold off on filing the special permit one until I can get another member to come in.
But we normally vote to sign them. Do we have to have a?
I think your, your vote to sign them is, is a ministerial vote, which is a simple majority.
Okay.
You have already taken the action on these, which are necessary to approve the special permit. When you approve the special permit, you have your four fifths. This is just a ministerial action, in my opinion, so I don't think you need to. I think your three would carry.
Okay, then, do I have a, uh, motion to sign a special permit for two Kenwood Court for an accessory dwelling unit?
Also move-
Second.
Talk about that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
And do I have a motion to sign the special permit for a state lot at, uh, Zero Glenwood Road?
I feel there's a condition missing. Yeah, number five, no earthwork, taking out or bringing in dirt, no trucks over 10,000 pounds without special permit for home occupation.
Okay.
No, because I've, I've heard some people talk about that on air.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. But no, I, I... All it takes is a complaint to the building inspector and hopefully move on from there.
So.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
So good.
Second, is there any further discussion? Once again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And? I don't believe it, but that basically ends our agenda.
See anything around here?
Which, I don't know, whatever happened to those 9:30 nights?
Somebody jinxed us. I'm not gonna tell her, her name, but-
Yeah. So things is, Tameka's taking the cotton day.
That's true.
Not as many hours.
It's like a quiet night when you work at a restaurant, and you don't get all your tips, you know?
Well, how, how late can Peter stay?
That's another story.
Okay, um... Well, if that's the case, this gentleman behind me has been here all night. Is there anything that he's-
I, I've just stopped to get a little bit familiar with the proceeding. I'm on agenda for the 10th of January. It'll be over all of the tree farm and, and the shared driveway.
Oh, that's the, yeah, the common driveway?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, I think that should be an easy one.
Well, as you can see, we're pretty friendly.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah.
Of course, we're only half here, so.
Yeah, the rabble rousers are-
They're not here to-
Yeah.
Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to adjourn. What time is it?
I think it's-
No way.
Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.